I'm just gonna spec that link. See if he's ready to join us.
While you're getting that link, I don't know that we need to adjust the agenda, but I do notice that the first actual item is approval of the minutes for July 20th and the 30th. And I look at the July 30th minutes and the first thing we did was already approved the July 20 minutes. I'm not sure. I don't think we need to approve them again, so. I will take a motion on the July 30th and July 30th. You will? Anybody like the second? Anybody have any discussion, anything? Use for two minutes for July 30? There being none, all in favor of minutes is printed?
Aye.
I guess that makes it unanimous. And August 10th, same deal. Discussion about those minutes. I enjoyed the public input where it said custodians will be cleaned and disinfected. I'm just reading this in the biggest public input section on the first page.
Listen, I tried to grab all those.
The third from the bottom line, custodians will be cleaned then disinfected. But with a sense of humor, we can approve them as printed. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
You in the post? And. Is there any public input that we need to address tonight?
So at the previous school board meeting on August 10th, an egregious statement was made by a board member that I believe needs to be addressed. I was actually not in the room for this comment. I was fortunately able to go to the YouTube page to watch and hear what was said. So thank you, social media. It was in regard to V-Lax and then potentially hiring more staff to satisfy the growing enrollment due to COVID-19. The comment was, who are they going to hire? I mean, is there a pool of teachers out there capable and they're just waiting for them to call? He nicely spoke English. That is a blatantly prejudiced statement and I'm rather appalled by the statement. We've had numerous English language learner students in our district in recent years. What are we saying to them? With everything that's happening in the world in regard to recognition of social injustice and systemic racism, these types of comments hit harder and now it is time to call them out. So Dick, I'm calling you out. I'd really like an explanation as to what you meant by this comment. And I believe an apology is owed to not only the community, but to V-Lax, who is working tirelessly to provide openings to students across the state of New Hampshire. We're supposed to work as one on this board, but I won't say I would allow these comments to go unnoticed or unchallenged. And maybe it's not how you meant it, but that's not what it's about. It's about how it was perceived and I, many community members perceive it as kind of hyperbolic. So I challenge all of us in this room to think about the impact that words have and how they can be interpreted differently. What we say matters.
So I believe, oops, I believe that was. Hey, is that me? And remind me which part of it is revolting to you, just help me out with that.
When you said it would be nice if the people that they hired would speak English. We're not an English speaking country.
We're not. Excuse me, I didn't know that.
There's years that don't speak English and it's offensive to me and I feel it offensive to.
I'm sorry, Dylan, I didn't realize that would be taken that way. It was meant to try to enlighten the moment, but I apologize for it. Can we move on, reset? Anybody else? Okay. Discussion of school openings.
So it's actually the first bullet in my, oh, thanks, my microphone killed. It's the first bullet in my, my report and you'd be right, these are week in advance. So it was the first day that schools had opened and, you know, by all accounts, we had a wonderful first day. I mean, lots of, lots of planning and lots of preparation went in through every school this summer to, to be ready. And it was wonderful to see students again. You know, we've had our share already of just common illnesses. You know, we've had to send students home with fever, with, you know, stomach problems and we've had a number of staff and students tested with common symptoms and they've all been negative. So we're really, we're really pleased with that. We don't want to see any positive cases in our school and I think the protocols and practices that we have in place will, will help us. As you know, the elementary school has, has choice for either in school or remote. The middle school is working on a hybrid model as well and as is the middle school. I mean, this is the high school and it's not perfect, but I'm really pleased with what we've been able to accomplish so far. I don't know if anybody has anything they want to add. To the reopening of schools, we've had a lot of really positive feedback from parents about their appreciation. We've had email appreciation from parents just saying, you know, they know it's, it's not exactly what everybody wanted, but that we're, we're making the best of, of what we have. Kind of a little bit fluid. I think some of the people that originally wanted remote have changed their minds and they want to come back in. And we're trying to accommodate that with the space and the protocols that we have in place. But we will have to periodically review our ability to provide remote and, and choice options. The, the state board of education, good news last week was they approved an additional $7 million for, for V-Lax tuitions. And I asked a question to one of the people that circled on the V-Lax board, if that's additional seats or will that just meet the needs of the students who have been waitlisted? And they said they believe it's the waitlisted students whose needs will be met. But if they didn't get in, it's not likely that they will be able to this, this trimester anyway.
Anyone else? So yeah, push it and then stay on. So is this, is this when we talk about when the school closes, how many, how many cases are? I mean, glad, very glad that everything went off without a hitch and I'm hoping that that continues. But I think at the SAU meeting that we had, we discussed whether or not we had voted on whether or not one case or more would close the school or which schools would close. This would like to open up the special.
I know, we've talked, I have a lot of boards. So we've talked about this at every board and I was surprised to be reminded that we've discussed what our threshold is, but the board hasn't voted yet. So we've discussed if we have one positive case from the student or staff member that we would quarantine. And that's not actually the recommendation of the Department of Health and Human Services. We're supposed to call them and talk to them and try to work through it to see if it's avoidable going to quarantine. I did bring copies of, you know, we had talked earlier about a matrix, what would a matrix look like? And then I just brought you a copy for your review. And there'll be some extra copies if anybody else wants to take. And they just talk about the level of community transmission that, you know, if it's, if it's low community transmission and few cases, you know, when should you, when could you be in person, when could you, should you be in a hybrid model? And when should you be remote? And at this point, because we have low community transmission or we are offering in person, but we're also offering, you know, hybrid. It's not 100% in person. And it gives you some, some guidelines about, you know, the numbers of students who are absent or the staff capacity to conduct classes. I mean, teachers are working really hard to have in-class, you know, lessons ready and the Google classroom is updated with, with lessons in case we have to turn around quickly to go remote or to use them for their remote day on Wednesday. But I think it's worth discussing, it happened a number of schools that have had positive cases already. I think Bedford or Wyndham had them the first day of school. And I don't know how their school is set up, but they were able to say that the student that tested positive from a camp, like in the middle of August, how they, I think they were in a first grade classroom even, how they were not within six feet, you know, for 10 minutes that day. I mean, I don't know, they did not close the school. They, they have quarantined a classroom or a group of kids, but they, they did not close. I think, I think I've been telling staff that if we had a positive case, we would quarantine. And I think that helped alleviate some fear and anxiety. But what's, what are you thinking, what are your wishes?
Well, I'll, I'll just follow up. I've seen this matrix before and I've looked at it and studied it. I don't understand it at all. And I'd rather just use a more simplistic approach, excellent number of cases, close X, or Y piece of the school or, or a school. It's a lot easier to figure out. And then the issue would be what do you do to reopen, how long do you wait? I don't know, if you could explain in particular this last, this last matrix, it might help me. But frankly, I think Dick, the last time I said if we have a student with COVID, we temporarily close. The question would be for how long, I guess. So I just throw it out there. I, I would agree with Dick that if we have one case, we don't close the whole school system, but we would close either that school down. I think you were saying last week that maybe we would just close one wing of the middle school. If the case was isolated to that one section of the school. But that, I'm not suggesting any particular, any particular formula, but I'm looking for people to weigh in. I think it's important that the teacher's still safe. That example you've indicated, you would think about closing the school after one, after one COVID case. I think that should be maybe where we start.
I think the middle school is easier to segregate than the elementary school. The elementary school is one line of, one line of, row of classes, as you know, and they, there's one boys bathroom, there's one girls bathroom, where I think the middle school is, has a dedicated.
The older students go near the gym.
Yeah, so it's a little, it's a little bit easier, but, you know, I think what they wanted at the state level was kind of a case by case basis and not a blanket formula. You know, the high school is a little harder. They also, their kids are moving all around the building following their coursework. I mean, it's not like if they all took the same courses, we could move the teachers, but the courses are different and they're offered in different locations, so they really are.
Plus, we have the busing issue. I mean, if you had a case and they ride a bus, then we have to figure. So I, I do believe when you contact Department of Health, they are supposed to assist us in doing that whole contact, figuring that out. But I, I, I think the immediate question is if, for some reason, we know somebody's positive for it in the school system this morning, what do we do right now? I guess is my question. I mean, I can understand calling them, but I have a feeling there's a certain time for them to crunch this all out.
Right.
Do we take that student, of course, isolate that student, send it home, him or her home if we can?
Well, we don't usually know.
Yeah.
We're sending students home with symptoms. And then some doctors aren't testing until they've had the symptoms for a number of days. You know, because they don't want to be testing everyone that just has a common cold or, you know, we've had strep throat already and.
So that leaves us kind of in the lurch if somebody's in the building sick and sent home. And we don't know why they were sent home. Now what do we do?
So.
We don't know whether they're positive.
We don't know if they're positive.
Or just.
So if they have symptoms, they get sent to the nurse's office. If they have symptoms, they'll be isolated, they'll, it's not convenient for parents to have to come and get them. And they have to, they have to have a negative test to return. The, the question you may be asking, correct me if I'm wrong, is if this, you're contacted by a parent on a Tuesday and the parent says, I've heard from the state that I have my child or I tested positively and we were in school yesterday. Because trust me, we've had a wide arrangement array of different scenarios that have come up. So every day it's been, you know, problem solving, puzzle, puzzle piecing. And I think if they've been exposed to somebody on Monday, then we have to notify families, you know, that there's been an exposure. You don't say staff or students, just been an exposure to somebody who was positive. And we're going to quarantine the school and, you know, you can't send everybody home at 8:30 because the student who's tested positively is already out. The cleaning and disinfecting has to happen every day as though there has been a positive case. That's why we're doing that kind of cleaning and disinfecting and wearing the masks and distancing. And I think the original plan would be to quarantine the school for two weeks because it takes two weeks for symptoms to develop. And I was, I was comfortable with that and that is an abundance of caution. And if, I know it's really hard for parents back to work, kids are in school. Everyone's feeling as though we're back to normal, but we are still absolutely in the middle of a public health crisis.
200,000 deaths probably in a week. So if we do that, that, that sounds very concerning and appropriate to me, but I'm one, one member. If we do that and send everybody out potentially for two weeks, and then after a couple of days, we've done some testing, find out that this is a very isolated case, it was one child brought to school by a parent, went to one classroom and never left that classroom, then we could perhaps re-circle. And I think the Department of Health will help us with that.
Yeah.
I suspect they'll probably come out and say, okay, well, it's one child not exposed to any more than this, this one third grade class, for example, and say the rest of the process could go back to normal. But I don't know how you write a policy or how we vote on a policy. It's, it's.
Well, I think, I think you have to give me some discretion, you know, to, to work with the state, to work with the nurses and the principals to figure that out. Because I think in, we've been in school, what, four days? And I can tell you across the SAU, we've had 20 different scenarios that we have to sort through. And they're all a little different.
Yeah.
So just, just do a blanket policy would be maybe not as, not as efficient. I think if you said something like, if we had a positive case and we need to quarantine, parents will be notified that there's been a positive case and that, you know, the superintendent with the school nurses and the principals will work with the state to figure out, you know, a course of action. But I'd expect people to be, I think they should expect a two-week quarantine. And then if we're able to open the building safely, we do.
Anybody else have a thought? A little less specifically related to possibility of COVID in the schools. Do we know off the top of our heads how many substitute teachers we have?
Not as many as we'd like. I think positive training for.
I guess, and just a follow-up to that, once all of the substitutes are in the building and we continue to have teachers who are not able to make it into school for other concerns, at what point do we not have enough staff to operate the schools and what do we do then?
Well.
Should that happen?
I just answered part of your question. I know at the middle school, we recruited some subs at the end of the summer. And we had special training for middle school subs and some of the elementary folks. It was a great turnout, I think we had 18, 19 people there. So we use this for some former subs and new ones to ensure that they're familiar with their COVID procedures.
So given that, again, the assumption is we, if we're sending students out for potential symptoms, we're also sending teachers.
Absolutely.
So if we have, again, worst case scenario, say we have 25 teachers in the district and we have 18 or 19 subs who are simultaneously out with potential symptoms and we have tests, do we have coverage for those classrooms or what do we do? Get to a point, even if it's not specifically that we have positive COVID tests.
It's just the quarantining.
Right. Where does that coverage become critical?
Yeah, so on page two of this little handout, it talks about the level of school impact. And one of the things they look at is just staff capacity to conduct, to conduct classes. And, you know, I think if you reach the point where every teacher in your building is out quarantining, then the, the building goes into quarantine. I mean, I, I think people are, they do a wonderful job covering for people, trying to reassign staff to, to cover when somebody is out, if you, you can't get a sub or if it's just going to be for a, a class or part of the day. But yeah, it's absolutely a consideration, one that I hope we don't have to, we don't have to face.
So how many teachers do we have in each school?
How many what?
Teachers that we have in each school, roughly.
I have 25.
25, I mean, it's roughly the same in each of the schools.
And, and for the substitute, that's about 18 for one school, what about the other schools?
Well, some of them serve multiple schools. Some of them will only go to the elementary, some will only go to the high school. You know, they do have preferences, some will go anywhere. We advertised, we increased subs' salary last year, we, you know, we do what we can to recruit. And some of the subs are, you know, at an at-risk category and aren't as interested, but we have, we have new ones and we certainly still have, still have people willing to come in.
Well, at the risk of inching this thing along a little bit further, I kind of like Dick's idea. If we quarantine and then sort of evaluate what the level of exposure was and then sort of unquarantine as appropriate, giving you the discretion, that seems to make sense to me. And I think we're all a little bit reticent to make an opinion, but that seems, that seems to make sense and I'm imagining that you'll have some input from, from the state as well. Anyone else?
Yeah, they have done is like one cluster, which I totally agree, which they're considered one cluster would be three positive cases. And I think that would be significant for us to actually put a blanket on because like the superintendent would be, you know, required to call up the, the health department and they would give us their two cents. And I, I think to just say we're going to close over one case where, you know, they're, the state is actually trying to make sure that if there's any way to be able to work through, you know, like the eighth graders, they don't really come in contact with anybody else. They're in their, you know, their own, they commit their own entry. So, you know, if there was a cluster in that classroom, I, I, I can't really see why you would close the elementary school or close a high school or close King Street. I would understand to close that whole classroom. If you had a cluster of three to, to have that whole classroom get tested, I don't see why the, the rest of the middle school. I mean, like we said, every situation and every scenario is going to have its own little twist on it. So, you know, if there was a sixth grader where they might move around a little more, that might be another scenario. You know, like, you know, because different grades are isolated a little more than others. I know the eighth grade is pretty well isolated, unlike some of the other classes, I think. I just, I, I see us putting this blanket over and then we're committed to doing that where the state might come in and suggest, well, you don't really need to, you could do this. So it's just kind of, you know, I think I would leave it up to, you know, the superintendent. I think you should leave it all up to all, all of us to decide, you know, with the input from the superintendent, the input from the, from the state or whatever, to not actually just, you know, no matter what happens, we're going to close the school now, we're going to quarantine and that's just the way it is and then go from there. I think we should actually get the information, get the ducks in a row and then act. I don't think we should just act and then try to figure out after that. I mean, obviously each case is different. If you have a cluster of three people, like I said, I mean, that, that to me would be, you know, severe, you know, one maybe is not so severe. But then it goes within the level of contact with those three that tested, you know, they might not have been in contact with anything. You know, it's hard to, you know, we're playing a guessing game and putting the blanket over everything.
I, I'm kind of reading that we would be, all right, we have a, I think we have a mutual understanding of what we want to do. And I think the superintendent has the right, in my view, has the right sense of how things should proceed. Do you want us to formally vote to give some discretion on this issue?
So back in the minute.
Okay. So if we had a motion to allow the superintendent discretion as to how to handle these cases and.
So that means if we have one case and she decides to close the whole school down, then she will be able to.
Yep.
Because I struggle with that. I struggle with that because she has already made that decision by putting that in the paper in our meeting last week, that she had already made that decision.
So that, and any other way of trying to do that would involve trying to reach out to the school board and hope everybody gets, reads their email when they get home that night and then perhaps respond within a day or something. I mean.
Right, but if we vote on it, it's not going to matter. If we vote on that, it's not going to matter if she can make that decision and then.
So, so your suggestion is to not give her discretion and to make us sit here for two days while everybody decides to get together by email. I mean, that, that's, I have a problem with that because of the delay. It would take us too long for the board to, to all read their emails and, and then get, we'd have to gather together the next day somehow. So you're looking at, I think, a two-day delay before we could act, where she could act in five minutes. That's just my preference. I would prefer to have somebody, and again, she can act and then we'll know about it. We can, we can regroup after she closes the schools and say we'd like to do something.
Was that we can quarantine the school and then we then have the discretion to investigate and perhaps reopen the school. And I only said that, Chuck, because this was the conversation we had at all the boards, was that we were going to have a very low threshold and that we were going to be super cautious. And I apologize if I spoke too soon for the Hable board about the quarantining, but looking at Nurse Rustelli over there, I mean, the nurses are really on the front lines. These poor women have argued with parents who had to come to get their kids and, you know, it's, it's a very challenging time. And I think our staff needs to know and our families need to know kind of what the, what the agreement is. So quarantine doesn't mean that everyone's going to be two weeks. It may be two weeks because, you know, it really takes that long to figure out whether anyone's going to develop symptoms, whether it's from a sporting event or a birthday party or a classroom exposure. If you don't have the two weeks, you could then have a surge in your school and you'd be remote for a lot longer than two weeks. It's a mitigation strategy.
I think it's important to note that a couple of months ago when we were discussing this, we were sort of distraught at the fact that we had no solid state guidance, but these two pages are pretty firm state guidance on when we should adopt a specific model. We're already ahead of the game looking at it. We're in a hybrid model currently, which is already recommended for schools that are further along into a potential outbreak than we are. We're in the top left, top left section of this matrix. So we're sitting pretty, we've already taken, we're in a hybrid model, which is kind of that middle yellow line with this matrix. So, you know, I think for us, with the potential for, say, we did get a case, you know, there's the potential for this to spread into a full-blown. say, we did get a case, you know, there's the potential for this to spread into a full-blown outbreak pretty rapidly. I think allowing, you know, and trusting our superintendent's discretion to make a call within potentially a couple of hours to stem that and allowing us to have the time to regroup and make a more firm decision afterwards, I think that would be prudent.
So, I think we're back to, do you have more to say, Chuck? I, I don't wanna cut off.
I think we're to the point of making that as a motion, if you would like to. I move to allow the superintendent discretion to interpret the state recommendations. Close schools and A and B.
I think she was, I think she was talking about a, a little more initial discretion than if there was a, if there was a case and she had a discussion of closing schools and then evaluate after talking to the state and looking at these, this outline. So I'd rather keep it as she's voiced it that the motion should be than if it was one case, then.
Just to make this clear. So, do you wanna retract that motion if you're very ready? There's a right, I can't have like two at the same time.
So I would move that if there was a, one case of COVID, that the superintendent had discretion to shut the schools down, or a school down where the child was, had the, had the outbreak and follow up with closing the school and perhaps reopening it in whole or in part, as she deemed appropriate, given later factual investigations to the extent of the exposure of the child to other students. That's what I wanted to. I'm happy to have a paraphrase by the superintendent.
So I, I think that was a motion and I need a second before we do the next step.
Anybody? Second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Can they clarify the motion?
Well, he just said that if we get one case, then it's gonna be up to the superintendent on whatever she decides. And then she can get info and then on out and go from there. Right?
That's perfect. Yeah.
And, and, and sure.
Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion? Say aye. Anyone opposed? The ayes have it. And I would add to it a request that the school board would be informed as soon as possible, please.
Absolutely.
Administrator report?
So talked a little bit about reopening already. Really have anything else to add? I did wanna just mention that the viewboards that you've invested in over the last couple of years are turning out to be immensely helpful with our work. We had some, you know, some people are feeling really comfortable with them and others are still learning them because they just got installed. And we have our tech team who's been creating videos, just like kind of entry-level videos right now, to help teachers who are new to the viewboards. They have a ton of potential, but I'd like to thank Lauren Noyes, who's here, and Stephanie Marston, Becky Chase, and Scott Nichols for their effort to help teachers with this new technology. And I did promise you I would send you those videos, but I have not yet. But I will do that. A little bit about the calendar shifts. We've kind of shifted the data days and PD days to Wednesdays for continuity of, of instruction. Oh, this was, I did wanna talk about this piece a little bit. My whole back page. So Chuck had commented about how Cottage Hospital always looks nice and clean. And I should, you know, recommend that I, I talked with them up there to see, you know, what they're doing. And I did have a nice chat with Laurie Fellows, the, the director of environmental services up there. And she was really quite pleased to get the compliment from, from you, Chuck. And she said their building has a hundred thousand square feet across two buildings. And she has eleven staff, including herself, for cleaning. And she, her question really was, how clean do you want your facility? She talked about some of her strengths. She has a great staff, as we do, dedicated to what needs to be done and is able to set priorities. She has clear cleaning protocols, schedules, and training. Of those eleven full-time equivalents, one does laundry, one does floors, and one does corridors and carpets. And the other eight are in rooms and restrooms. One is always off, so seven are on staff during the course of the day. She feels the cleaning crews have always been important, but more so now with this public health crisis. And I think our custodians are certainly feeling that as well. Then they have three additional FTEs to do painting and repairs. And the cleaning crew creates help desk tickets if there's something that they notice the maintenance crew needs to attend to. So there's no sitting time other than break and lunch. And she's the director and she's on, she's cleaning as well, constantly moving. She had, I told her that we have roughly a hundred and forty thousand square feet between the three buildings. And we have seven FTEs plus Bert, who also works in Piermont and Bath. She suggested we could use another two people just to do the maintenance and let the cleaning people do the cleaning. And having strict schedules and maybe specialized like they do with floors and classrooms and bathrooms. She said her cleaning staff also have a few minutes at the end of the shift to record what was not done and why. You know, didn't do this room, the patient moved, they had to do that room. And she, she really talked about maybe looking at existing staff and figuring out if you added staff, what their preferences were. Some of them like the cleaning and some of them prefer to be maintenance people and not doing the cleaning. So if we ever reached a point where we were adding staff, I would look for something. That was a good strategy. But it was pretty, a pretty stark contrast to have eleven full-time cleaning crews plus the three painting in, so fourteen people for a hundred thousand square feet. And we have seven FTEs plus Bert, which is a portion of his day, because the other portion is working with other districts as well. So by the hospital standard, we're, we're understaffed. And the question is, how clean do you want your facility? And you have to staff it. And then you have to make sure they have the training and the checklist and the schedules, which are relatively new for us based on the work, you know, Bert did last year with the consultant. So Bert will tell you that we're, for subs, we're desperately in short supply of custodial subs. We've advertised, we had a good, an excellent response to the posting for the full-time replacement of the elementary school. And we have an outstanding person that was hired and he's just finishing the fingerprinting and background check. We're also looking at getting a quote from a cleaning company to see what would it cost to have somebody three hours.
Thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents an hour.
Thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents an hour. So I can have that information this morning. Thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents an hour to have one person for, say, three hours a day? So Bert will tell you, but this morning he was in this school, because we're short-handed, at quarter of five. And he worked three hours getting through all the bathrooms. I forget the long list of everything else. Without Bert, we would be, we would have half a canoe and no paddles. So.
Laurie, how many square feet do we have? You said it was fourteen.
So it's a hundred and forty thousand.
This, this one, this facility is sixty-seven thousand square feet. The, the middle school is sixty-two thousand square feet. The elementary school is thirty-two thousand square feet.
So you did some quick mental math this morning, which I thought was interesting. So with their, with the high schools, I mean, the hospitals staff, they're roughly responsible for ten thousand square feet per person. And ours would be twenty-five to thirty thousand square feet per person per day. So it's a stark contrast. If, if you remember that report from the consultant said, you know, there's five levels. Do you wanna be a one, a two, a three, a four, a five, those national levels for cleaning and, and maintenance. And you know, one is top-notch, two is really amazing, kind of the Canadian standard. Our schools are mostly at three. The high school was like a three-point-two-five. So as you get closer to four, you get into a place where you really don't wanna be. A really not acceptable mode to be a five. And there's different amounts of time that people have available to be in classrooms. The difference between, you know, a three might be eight minutes per class, but a two would be fifteen minutes per class. So, you know, how many people you have and how many square feet you're trying to clean, it does make a difference.
So, if I may, a couple of things. Didn't think of it when Bert spoke, but he's supposed to, everybody that wants to speak really should have a mic so that the people out there can hear. And here's the next one. There is a difference, and I, I just am doing the logistics of this in my mind, because I'm very familiar with the hospital, but they're a twenty-four-hour-a-day operation. So they do have four people on at night where we don't have any, in theory, as much activity at night, you know. We're not, so I don't, I'm not sure it's a complete apples, apples comparison. So we, you know, we need to figure out what we need to do to stay clean. Laurie's, she's, she's A-plus in my estimate. She's, she's rated her job and keeps that place really, really good. She does a nice job. Anyway, that's what I had to say.
So if I could ask Bert what he would like to see. What would you like to see?
What I would like to see is us follow the advice from the consultant. That we've paid a lot of money to this guy. And to be honest with you, as far as the cleaning part of the facilities department, we're pretty close. If you throw out COVID, I mean, this, this obviously is sort of a huge, huge curve ball. We're close. Where we're lacking is, and this was the first recommendation on, on his report, is that a school district of this size should have one point seven six, how do you divide that up? One point seven six maintenance people. And this sounds like what the hospital director told Laurie, that we don't have, really, we don't have a maintenance staff. Well, the way they put a maintenance staff all together is to give me point five FTEs maintenance. And to me, that's, to expect me with, with all that, all the other things I'm responsible for, to spend half of my day, every day, doing maintenance for the Hable School District is not realistic. It's just not. I, I've got a full-time job, to be honest with you, steering the ship. What I would love to see, you asked, you asked me, I'm gonna tell you. What I would love to see is get us a little closer to where we should be, hire a full-time maintenance person for the Hable School District. Use that person also as a custodial sub. And, because right now, I've got, I, I don't know if you realize it, I've got two custodians up. Is Devon back yet? I've got two custodians out in quarantine. What I have personally had to do the first two weeks of school is the same. Like I said, I was here quarter of five this morning, cleaning bathrooms, getting trash, cleaning classrooms, looking down stuff. And I got home at four-thirty. That's been my week, my weekend ahead so far.
So can we make a motion to hire a full-time maintenance now at the Hable Middle School?
What I would ask the superintendent is, can you make a recommendation to us? I mean, you, you understand.
You know, the, the report from the consultant came out pre-COVID. The assessment that he did was all pre-COVID. And before, so we need more now than we did then. And when we read the report, and I had talked to Bert about this, I said, I'm not going, budget's already been passed. I'm not gonna ask for another position based on this report with the budget having already been developed. Because the other thing that was in the report was, like at the high school, they said one custodian, based on their schedule, has too much work and the other one has not enough to fill a schedule. So we've made some scheduling shifts of, of duties and responsibilities. But it does, that's for cleaning. It doesn't help the maintenance. It was my plan in the next budget cycle to request another maintenance person.
I think we just can't, I, I think at this point that we just can't prolong that. I think what, what Bert's been going through, that we absolutely have to hire a maintenance guy. I mean, not even counting the COVID. It sounds like he's struggling anyways to keep people at the job. And then you add the COVID in with it. I, I would highly recommend that.
It's definitely.
We can't wait. We can't wait any longer.
Increased degree of difficulty. And it's, it wears on me because I'm trying to do at least two different things. And I personally don't feel I'm doing either one of them.
Well, we appreciate your hard work, Mer. Just so you know. And thank you very much for your hard work out there.
We have not had luck recruiting part-time people. But the, but the response we had to full-time was, we advertised on Indeed and in the paper, but through Indeed, I think we had eight or nine or ten applicants. And that's how we found this one.
Yes, the one we hired, we did find through Indeed.
So I mean, just because we hire a maintenance guy down at the middle school and let's say get things taken care of and we're sure, there's no reason why we can't bring him to the high school or the middle, or the elementary school to do whatever it takes to, to help out, kind of like what you're doing.
Right. My suggestion is that we be a district physician.
Oh, yeah.
For sure.
So we, we have some money for COVID. But I'm not sure that would cover this, because it doesn't sound horribly COVID-related. I'm not sure it's.
It's one-time money and we've spent some because we gotta buy teacher computers and certain Chromebooks and.
Well, that would take care of it until we could actually budget it in for next year. That would take care of us for right now to take care of it. And then we can actually budget it in and make it happen for next year, for sure.
So.
I don't, I don't typically make recommendations for physicians that we didn't budget for. But it will be in the next one. But if we don't hire, then we're gonna be, we're gonna be paying for, we're gonna hire a company to command at thirty-six dollars and forty-four cents an hour.
Right. I, I don't have any problem with the concept.
Yeah.
It's.
My problem is, is that we're, we're, you know, we're really making Bert go thin and whoever else. So, I mean, you know, we keep this going on and, and, you know, what, what happens if Bert just says, I can't take it anymore, he's done? So then we're really gonna be in a world of hurt, having him down and not having these other people. So I think, you know, the longer we wait is just putting everybody.
So like pre-COVID, if your floor didn't get vacuumed, it wasn't the end of the world. If you're a first-grade teacher and your, your desks don't get cleaned and disinfected, it can be a public health matter. So I, I don't know if I would call it a maintenance person, but I, I think if we hired another full-time custodian slash maintenance person and, and use them where we needed to. But we also have to look at, you know, how everyone is spending their time and see if we can loosen up some of those restrictions on, on Bert's time.
Okay, so I think we're probably gonna say yes to that. I'm gonna get, hypothetically, if we say yes to that, and you would hire that person, that would be COVID-related, because we cannot let housekeeping slide. So I, I, I'm trying to see the rationale for using that money if we can. So I just, that's my question.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd argue that there's no problem with the rationale of using that money, because the people we have on staff are needed to provide
Exactly.
the cleaning and sanitation for COVID. So if hiring somebody, regardless of what their non-responsibility is, will free up the people we have already to do the job cleaning, then that's COVID-related.
That's it, exactly. I think we're good.
Kathy's gonna tell you that we don't have much of that left because we've been spending it.
That's what I was gonna tell you, right.
Well, the, the other question too isn't, what's the potential for going back to the governor for, I can't say I follow all of his 83 decisions he's made since this happened. But, I mean, I, I think he has indicated some willingness to listen to increased needs and try to respond to that.
We spent it all, because they're tracking what's been spent. And some districts are holding some money, just see what happens. And others have spent it all because they had to spend it. I would absolutely petition the governor for additional funds if our, if our COVID-related funds have been, have been spent. And I believe they are, and they have been. I, I would certainly, and I think we have some local reps and senators that would support that as well.
So somebody want to make a motion?
Make a motion.
To hire one.
Maintenance slash custodian slash district.
How do you want that person to find? You want it to be?
District.
District custodial person?
I think that'll cover, right? Be able to use that in schools.
So you're making a motion to hire that person. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
And just to clarify, that's a full-time position.
Correct. Okay. All in favor?
All in favor, all right. Anyone opposed?
Thank you, Bert's gonna sleep better tonight.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Bert.
Thank you.
Thank you. I thought you were, you're gonna sleep all right tonight, anyway. I'm gonna sleep well tonight, too.
It's lucky I used the farm, so these hours are new to me.
I hear you. So Kathy's here, and she has, are we, are you?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
And then some.
I think, yeah, there she is. So Kathy, we've, for the purpose of our, our audience out there, we asked everybody to sit in front of one of these when they speak, so if you don't mind. So your, your financial report was, once again, very happy reading for me, so would you like to go over it?
Sure, not too much different from the projection that we had. You know, as we had looked throughout the year, there were a few differences from the last projection. We had received more special ed tuition than we anticipated. Regular ed tuition than anticipated, and special ed costs were less. So, uh, big numbers on this report. And that is because that big building aid check that we received this year is really skewing the revenue and expenses as we paid off that loan for 1.8 million. So our true surplus for the year was 395. So as we talked about, we saw some savings at the end of last year due to COVID. And so substitutes were usually over in those lines, you know, we were under, those kinds of things. It's gonna be the opposite this year. And so we've actually spent most of that CARES money. I'm not sure, I'm trying to close books, and others are here this week, so we'll have a really guide into where we're at right now for the current year. But just know that most of the expense is gonna come this year. So we've used up the CARES money the best, that we can. And then there are those things that we don't have money for, but we are tracking separately under a separate code so we can see, you know, this is what it's costing us. So whether it's PPE or, or that sort of thing. So as far as year-end financials, did anyone have any questions on that?
I, I had one on the building aid, and I kind of understand the principle of it. But so at the end of the day, we received over $3 million. No, we received 2.6. And we had a $1.8 million loan, which we paid off in the balance. And that's where I'm a little unclear. I know we were going to use that to reduce the bond payments going forward. But where does it sit in the, on, in the budget?
So not necessarily in the budget. So on the front page, you've got your fund balances. And we've assigned a fund balance for the building aid. And we put, instead of the balance of that building aid, $793,000 in that account. And so what we'll do, as, as we budgeted for this current year, we will pull 1/19th or 1/20th of that bond payment, or what was left for building aid, out of that assigned fund balance to offset the expense for every year.
Okay, so that entire, that amount is going into a trust or something, correct? Is it 700?
We actually have it, yep, right now it's sitting in the investment account that we used for the bond payments for a capital project.
Thank you.
So as soon as I get to go ahead, I'll do the final building aid stuff. We, we have a whole list of information we have to give the state in order to get that last check. $620,000 or whatever, which will also go in that account. Any other questions?
Well, at the risk of bringing up the last topic, can any of that money be used for this new position? But not okay to.
No, building aid?
Right.
Absolutely not.
Okay. So Mr. Chinch, you have anything to add to it?
I do not, I was gonna speak about the custodial issue and take care of it, thank you.
Well, that was easy for you. Thank you. And Mr. Phillips, I think is next, anything? Did I say, yeah, there he is.
Hi there. I think one of the things we just wanted to bring up is, in the final weeks before school started this year, we developed a number of different schedules. And as we learned that VELAX was not accepting the 31 students that had applied, we had to scramble and come up with an alternative. So we did suggest Khan Academy, which some schools are using. But as of right now, we have a teacher that we freed up two periods a day, and they will supervise students in a hybrid model of we've been personally calling all those parents the past two days and then getting them signed up for that. So it's a little different than what we originally planned on. But I think that's been the name of the game this summer, just making a lot of changes. So it's good to know that those kids are gonna be back in, in school. So that was the only addition I wanted to make to the board of the board.
Thank you, right. It's certainly worth remembering that we've never had anything like this happen before. So expecting anybody to have a playbook that fits this too is ridiculous. Mr. Ross?
Yeah, I'd like to just point out two things on the report. One is the, we had a little plumbing-ish move on the first day that we have found the source and will, it involves some digging, which we will do on Wednesday when the kids are out of the building. Bert can speak to more of that if you'd like.
But it's gonna happen Wednesday.
Yeah. But it's, it's outside the building, about 50 feet to the stuff. Not, not into the parking lot, but pretty close to it. We have that all lined up. The other thing is, our pickup and our drop-off, our new system where the parents are going around the back has been pretty smooth. And the parents are doing an awesome job of showing up when we ask them to show up. And we're not finding any traffic problems with the buses, things are going really smooth. The problem is, when they come around the building on the, on the eastern side, where the, where the, was it 302?
Yes.
Yeah.
302 is, that's a sidewalk, and especially the big rigs are running into the, the grass. And right now, without any rain for the last month, it's, it's fine, it's just kicking up some dust. But my fear is when we get some, some rain, and if, if this, heaven forbid, goes into the winter months and it gets to be snow, it's gonna get a bit mucky in there. So we're hoping we can just at least start to explore some additional, expand that out a little bit, maybe put some crushed rock in there, so it becomes more of a road around the corner rather than a sidewalk, where, where we're not gonna get those big trucks mired in the muck. Here's a picture of it in the, at the bottom of the last page. If you can see the cars, that's the evidence I'm talking about.
The side of the face is like the Nooka.
So you don't have any cars driving around the whole building?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no wonder it didn't, it didn't register with me.
I'm sorry.
My, my fault, now I get it.
You need to visit and watch us.
Yeah. Oh, I see your point. Sure, that makes sense.
Oh, they're driving right down the.
So you need some.
The whole backside of the building.
You need some stay mat or something else, is that what we're talking about?
Oh, yeah, because they're cutting them wide, yeah.
Yeah.
That makes sense now.
And the cars can stay on that sidewalk, but the big rigs do.
Yeah, when you said big rigs, I'm, Route 302, traffic trailers, you're completely lost. I have no idea where we were going.
A big rig to me is a big pickup.
Yeah. But, you know, for less than $1,000, you can delegate, spread from, you know, stay mat. A quarter mile or something.
Yeah.
Yes, you did.
Not in the spot where we're asking.
No. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I was distracted.
I was passing notes.
And so, so we, we had the, the parents go to the back because it separates, and the kids are being dropped off right into the classroom. So it's, to keep them separated, to reduce as much traffic as possible, we have the parents in the back, and they drop off in the heart top area. And all our doors are right there, so the kids go right into, to the building. They're not going down the hallways and such. In order to do that, we have, the parents have to travel all the way around the building.
Okay, I see what you're saying, I see what you're saying. All the way around the building.
Yeah.
So again, it's gonna get, I think it's gonna get beat up. And if you ever have any rain, any real rain, it might get a little mucky back there. It's one of the reasons, we originally had the buses do that, and it was the reason the bus company decided to go off, phone it out front instead, because they just, they thought the ground would get pretty mucked up.
I, I can get a quote on what it will take to hook that lane all the way around.
Well, it's, we're, we're doing something to the, to the ground, so I think, I think we have to leave the school board approval for that, right?
But they need to know how much they're working.
Well, yeah, and I think we can put it off to October 14th. I just wanted permission to go forward with it so that.
I don't think you're, we're not looking for additional funding out of this year's budget?
Well, it's gonna have to come from someplace.
Back to the treasurer, what about that building? Each, each building has a maintenance budget, right? I mean, how, how are we fair with that at this point? Are we?
We're, we're within budget everywhere, but we need to know what we're working with. But so I've got, the first step is to find out how much we're talking.
Come up with a plan and then price it.
Exactly how much water you're gonna need and help power, and then come back and figure something out.
The superintendent's authorized to spend up to a certain amount of money.
Then we put it in a request for the following year. Unless it's an emergency, we have to live within our budget.
I think from what he was saying was that if we don't take care of that before winter, it is gonna be the initial.
But we knew about that last year as well.
Okay. So Jessica, here you are, how are you today?
I'm very good, how are you? I don't have anything to add unless you have any questions on it at all.
Anyone have questions for her?
Jess did a really good job at the S.A.U. board meeting, so I know you've already heard some of the things that she's done. But she trained 70, 70 people on crisis prevention intervention. And it's a, it's a huge asset to our district to have her trained to be able to do that. So thank you, Jessica, for all your work helping us reopen schools safely.
Bert, I think you're ready, do you have more?
You've made me really happy, so I'm, I'm gonna shut up.
That's it, that's all, sir.
Okay, and so, here's Perry, yeah, yes, he is. Do you have anything to add?
I don't know if I have what to add. From the report, just wanted to spend a few seconds to highlight some of the activities. With ITI specifically, that I've been working with the administration to plan star testing. Also working with Jamie Jarvis to overcome sort of technical issues of doing remote assessments. She's been contacting Renaissance specifically. So generally, we only do assessments in-house. So there's a bunch of technical issues that we have to overcome to allow that sort of testing to be remote. And that boom, bump, and roll, but I think everything's going to, going smoothly in that regard. I'm excited about two, we're planning on connecting with the high school department heads on, on some curriculum issues. So that's an exciting development that I'm, be sure to report on, any, any outcomes there. Annual training went, went pretty smoothly. We have added, I think, three or four new modules. One was pretty extensive around COVID training. And we got some pretty good results, and we'll keep track of that. And then lastly, most of my time has actually been supporting teachers working in hybrid or remote, that they're asking for advice and, and support in those areas. And so I've made a couple of videos, and you may see it at the very bottom of my report. There's a couple of links, so I encourage you to, to go onto the virtual report. And then those are clickable, so they're kind of funny, you can see me in action as a, as a tutorial, and that's all I have.
I just want to point out that Bert and I have talked about your desire for there to be a committee of sorts, to look at our curriculum and make sure that we're accurately representing history and social justice issues and current events. And one of the things that we talked about was kind of doing that authentically. So when the high school is gonna, he's gonna meet with department heads about curriculum groups and review the course catalog and evaluate new and current offerings, courses. I mean, this is the place to use, because it's some kind of a rubric that he's gonna use to help us look at our current curriculum, because it's very likely that we'll be able to embed a lot of those important concepts and ideas into our existing curriculum, rather than have a separate course that you get once as an elective. It's really about proper curriculum review, rather than, and the CAC can do that as well. And he's looking at the Curriculum Advisory Committee for reviewing and evaluating our current curriculum. So I don't want you to think we have forgotten that, we have not. I'd love to see some of those students that came and spoke so passionately be invited to our schools for, via Zoom even, as guest speakers, to help kids talk about some of these, these issues or their experiences after high school. I think the more we do of that, the more authentic we will have. An updated, accurate, you know, and maybe everything we're doing is, is fine, but maybe there's some places we can make some improvements.
So my question with that is, I think we had learned on establishing a class on social justice issues, and I'd hate to see that go away in, replaced by sort of a general investigation of the authenticity of the rest of it. I think that that's.
I thought it was a committee. It's unusual for a school board to mandate a course, an elective course, where students would get it once in their high school career. What I'm talking about is something richer and embedded K to 12, rather than, you know, a, a one-shot. So it was the committee, I recall.
But you could check it.
But I think the bottom line is what we're more concerned about is that, that those issues get addressed at some point. I don't know. It's a huge concern of mine that others done by committee or by individuals who have the right ideas into it properly. At the risk of being quoted. At the risk of being quoted badly, I'm just saying committees that are in place where bad, good ideas go to die. And and.
So I know I know Scott Nichols here has purchased lots of current books on on the topic. He lent me one this summer, how to be an anti racist. You know, it's not just, it's not enough anymore to say you're not racist. You have to actively work to to address the issues and um, you know, address your own bias, identify your own bias. It's there are some difficult conversations that um are happening across the country. And I think we can have some of them too, to make sure we're representing um ourselves and history and uh social justice properly. So I just wanted to, you know, we haven't forgotten that. Eric is keenly aware.
Sure. Jim's been anxiously waiting for his turn.
I I I have nothing nothing to add. Any questions or?
Everything's working out all right for you technology wise this year?
Yep. The person we brought on in July has been doing a great job. Um, still bringing her up to speed, of course, but that takes time. So but yeah, a little busier opening this year. Actually, it's about twice as hard this year.
As you expected.
Yeah, yeah. But we're plugging away. We're doing all right.
Thank you. That's great.
Well.
So Jim, just a question about the um talking to the vendor on the view boards about advanced training options. What what would that look like?
Um, as you um gave credit earlier, I also would give credit as well to those folks, Scott and Lori Ann, Becky and Stephanie. They have been working on developing kind of, I don't wanna say baseline, but more of an introductory type training for teachers who use them last year and need a little refresher. And the teachers have got a few boards this year and really had no idea what they were doing yet. They've been a very big help with that. Um, but I've worked with the vendor to get more advanced training from View Sonic. So now that everybody's gotten a baseline on it and understanding, they have some use under their belt, start to get them involved in more uh more advanced trainings. They can do more and more with these with these screens.
Will they be onsite or webinars or?
Um, they do webinars, I believe it is.
They could record those and make them available for.
Yeah.
Other people all the time. That's great.
Yeah.
So um, I know we all have read and reread the administration of federal grant funds. And I know I can't help myself. So we have to, unless somebody wants to make comments on them, which were definitely boring or long arduous reading. Um, but I made it through them. Anybody have any comments on them before we proceed with that?
Yeah, I I went through them too. I I thought they made sense. Yeah, I didn't see any glaring insistences.
Thank you. So motion to adopt, anybody?
I'll make a motion.
To adopt uh.
The administration of federal grant fund.
Yep. I'll see D A F, I think is correct. Anybody second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed or abstaining? Okay. Um, nominations, resignations?
We have one resignation by our part time E L L person, Bonnie Cornell. We have a handful of students, a small handful of students in this district that um require services. And they also were required to have an E L L person on staff who can is certified to do the testing. So part time certified people are really hard to come by. They do have a colleague who just retired as a superintendent who um is able is certified and is able to do the testing. And she said, if we don't have somebody by the spring, she will come and and do our testing for us. Um, in our district, we do have a title one teacher and a special ed teacher who are certified as E L L. And um, I'll be working with their principals to um have them help those kiddos with, a lot of times it's writing and editing, writing, and it's kind of the last piece that comes with language learning. So we're trying to cover it, but pretty people are pretty stretched out. So I'll still look to fill that. I just, um, in the other one, we still have the part time guidance council at the high school we haven't filled, right, Eric? I think that's it for open positions. It's not a nomination or resignation, but it's just for your information. So Bonnie Cornell really is the only one.
Any other business tonight? And following that, any other?
I would just like to uh bring up the grading system again.
We're supposed to do that in October, right?
Is it?
October meeting.
Okay.
Thank you for remembering that. I did as well, but I've already heard that we're gonna do that. So um, public input. So it says next meeting date, October twelfth. Why to be determined is the location we.
I don't know. It's it's easier for Scott to do the recording here. Um, so it's okay with you. We have them at the high school.
Set your preference?
Yes, sir.
Does anyone object to having it here next time? Then I think we've answered that. I'm gonna have it here then. Do we need a non-public? I've lost track of.
We do need one for personnel.
All right. So we need to poll the board, see if they agree to go into non-public for reviewing the personnel matter. I need to show a hands members one. There we go.
I just want to ask before you go, the um, October twelfth is Columbus Day Monday.
Oh.
I don't know if anybody has travel plans or you wanna have it on a different day. And keep the twelfth? Okay.
Guess we'll leave it. Thank you.